I'd like to call the committee meeting to order, please. My everybody, please rise for prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Egan, will you lead us into place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, Ms. Fochey.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Egan. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson's out with us tonight. Her fifth grader is being inducted at La Costa Elementary School into the, and her eighth grader is at the Scheduling Expo at the high school. So she's playing mom tonight. Ms. Lee Bowman. Ms. Moon. Ms. Isar. Mr. England. Mr. Long. Mr. Smith is not with us. Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fochey. I'd like to take a moment of privilege, please, to, they had a couple of people that passed away. They had a past board member, Ms. Joanne Suarez, passed away. And then we had a secretary over at Shamet that's been with us for a long, long time. I know this lady and her whole family for a long time, Marietta Rousseau. If anybody is familiar with her, she's worked for close to thirty-five, forty years, close to that time. So if we could just have a moment of silence, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. And our condolences go out to those families.
Cliff, I can add, yes, I had the privilege of working with Ms. Suarez on board. And she was always a very pleasant, very conservative, very caring board member. And it was a pleasure working with her. And beside that, she has a family of, I think, six girls.
Yeah.
That she's, so she, she had a handful and raised a beautiful family. And, you know, as you said, Mr. England, our condolences go out to the Suarez family. And then Ms. Marietta Rousseau, I had the pleasure of working along with her too, when she was secretary at Shamet High. And everyone got a kick out of Ms. Marietta. She, she knew how to run things in the office, and she was just a wonderful person. And she has a very large family, and some of the teachers now with us. And so she also has a wonderful legacy. And our condolences go out to the Rousseau family also.
Definitely.
They were both great people.
Thank you, Ms. Isar.
Anyone else?
Uh, sorry, go ahead.
No, Mr. Long asked.
Mr. Long?
Well, I just wanted to say, I also got to know Ms. Suarez and, and her family. All I can say is she was a very classy lady. And all my interactions with her was, was very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, and I've worked with Ms. Marietta. In fact, her daughter was the secretary at Shamet, Ms. Diedrich Rovey. And my, she had a large family, Mitch, who's a deputy, or Alan. I taught them all.
Right. And all of her children, grandchildren have been through our schools, and it's the whole, I know the whole school system.
Yeah, Ms. Watson, she, she's a granddaughter, right. So, okay, anybody want?
One more thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Since this is our first meeting after the election, I just wanted to thank the voters of District Seven for voting, re-electing me. And I'm very humbled and honored, and I want to thank all of those who, who supported me. Thank you very much.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. We have a request tonight, and we have to suspend the rules. We have a joint by Mr. Warren Serenay, would like to speak. And so we've got to suspend the rules. So do I have a motion to suspend those rules?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Long, seconded by Ms. Isar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Mr. Serenay? Can you just give your name and your address? And the rules, the way it works, Mr. Serenay, like I told you before, is three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Warren Serenay Jr. I'm a retired teacher who worked at Raleigh for about ten years. I'm currently, currently working as a substitute teacher at Shamet High School. I'm here to ask the committee to consider a pay raise for substitutes. In the last ten years or more, there has not been a raise. The cost of living has increased at, at this time. Since the pandemic, there has been a shortage of teachers and substitutes. Today, the subs in San Bernadette Parish who are, who are uncertified are working for about eight dollars and forty-nine cents an hour, while certified subs are working for about ten bucks an hour. Recently, McDonald hired fifteen-year-old, fifteen-year-old students to work at their restaurant for eleven dollars an hour. Recreational workers at the playgrounds here in San Bernadette Parish are, are making ten dollars an hour. In Jefferson Parish, subs are making from twenty-eight to fifty-eight dollars per day, depending on qualifications. In Santameni, they are working for twenty-five dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars a day, depending on qualifications. Subs have responsibility for keeping students working at all times, the well-being and safety of students at all times. We have twenty to thirty students sometimes in the classroom. We cannot afford to lose any more subs, as it stands. Now, our office personnel has to fill in sometimes when we don't have enough subs. And recently, Mr. Warner and Mr. Munt had to step in and on occasions to sub. Subs are an essential part of the educational program in, not only in San Bernadette Parish, but throughout the state of Louisiana. Therefore, I respectfully request that you consider for an increase in substitute pay raise. Thank you. Any questions?
At this time, Mr. Serenay, what we're going to do, take in an advisement, and we'll get together with the administration, and we'll discuss it, and we'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Serenay. Anybody, Andrew, did anybody else sign up that wanted to speak? Does anybody else want to speak? Would you, would you step up to the mic, please, and give your name and your address, please?
My name is Linda.
How you doing, Linda?
Okay. And I work five days a week. They need a step ad. We're working five days a week. But when you say get back with us, what do you mean by get back? Tomorrow, next week, a month?
Well, no, we've got to talk with Ms. Fochey, but the board's got to get together with her, and then we'll get back to you. Now, Ms. Fochey, can I give you some time?
I can respond if you'd like, Ms. Sean.
Sure.
We're going through a budget process where we will be looking to revise the budget, and this is one of the items we were going to consider. So we're looking at not only employee pay for this coming year, and we're also going to be looking at substitute pay. So it's nothing that anybody can do throughout this budget process immediately. It would be within the next two to three months as we look at revising our budget.
So before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year, we would, you would be, you would be hearing from us, yes.
Okay.
As we go through that process.
Because I hate to have to go get another job that I can make more money right now, because I love what I do, and I'm there all the time.
And we're so thankful for what you do.
The other subs are there, too.
No, we appreciate everything that you're doing. But what was your last name, Ms. Linda?
Faugu.
Faugu? Just for the records, that's what we need.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There's nobody else, so we'll just move on. Education Committee, Ms. White.
The agenda, 2023 to 2024 school calendar, to present, Ms. Marietta.
Hi, good evening. I have some information for you this evening regarding the employee calendar options for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. And I really have to start by thanking Ms. Maggie Rousseau. She put a phenomenal committee together. They came up with three really good options for the employees to vote, and as evidence of that, all three options received a good number of votes. Option one received one hundred and eighty-three votes. Option three received two hundred and thirty-two votes. And option two received the most votes with two hundred and fifty-five. So the votes were spread amongst the three options, and what I'd like to do now is explain the options to you and explain your handouts. So what you do have is what was given to the employees. The first sheet is written information and some dates and explanation of the three options. The last page for you on your stapled copy breaks down for you by site and by option, the total number of votes each option received by site and the totals. That's page three of your stapled copy. And then I'd like to go over the color-coded calendar with you. That's just easier to understand the options. I did give the written verbiage, but sometimes it's easier to view it in the calendar style. So if we'll take a look in order, just option one. So with option one, and actually with all three options, the teachers have four days for PD before the school year starts, which is August first through August fourth. And the students start the school year on August seventh in all three options. Then all three options, we do have Labor Day, September fourth, as a holiday. And the difference across the calendars really is shown in the fall breaks in October, Christmas, and then also Easter holidays. So for option one, option one had two fall break days, October ninth and tenth. And the three, as we're used to, the three broken-out professional development conference days in October, October seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. This option had the teachers attending their PD day before report card conference days. That's what's different about this option. Then the holiday on November first, as we always like to do after students have Halloween. All three options have Thanksgiving holiday, the exact same week for a solid week of Thanksgiving. This option had a shorter Christmas holiday, with Christmas holidays starting on December thirty-first and extending, of course, through New Year's Day. This option, as all three options, have the Martin Luther King Junior Observance Day on January fifteenth. And all three options have the full week for Mardi Gras break in February. And this option differed where it had the day before Easter, Good Friday, and then the week after Easter. And then all three options end with students' last day, May twenty-third, and records day, May twenty-fourth. So the difference then, as you go to option two and three, which option two is the one with the most votes, two hundred and fifty-five. Option two and three, again, as I said, August is the same, same four PD days, students start on August seventh. Labor Day as a holiday. And when you get to October, the difference is option two had a one-day fall break with report card conference, as we did it this year, where the teachers teach in the day, and then the parents have the report card conference night. We always have high school first, and then middle school, and then elementary. Both option two and three have the November first PD day, the day after Halloween. So the teachers would come for PD when the students were coming back from Halloween. This, both of these options have a week for Thanksgiving, the full two weeks for Christmas, as well as New Year's Day. Both of these options, of course, have Martin Luther King Junior Observance Day, week for Mardi Gras. The difference here, option two has the full week before Easter as holiday. So you notice option two had one-day fall break, and option three has a two-day fall break. So that's why it would, one-day difference in the Easter holiday. So option three is how we had it this year, two days before Easter and the two days following Easter. And then all the calendars end with students' last day, May third, May twenty-third, and records day, May twenty-fourth. So the difference then, as you go to option two and three, which option two is the one with the most votes, two hundred and fifty-five. Option two and three, again, as I said, August is the same, same four PD days, students start on August seventh. Labor Day as a holiday. And when you get to October, the difference is option two had a one-day fall break with report card conference, as we did it this year, where the teachers teach in the day, and then the parents have the report card conference night. We always have high school first, and then middle school, and then elementary. Both option two and three have the November first PD day, the day after Halloween. So the teachers would come for PD when the students were coming back from Halloween. This, both of these options have a week for Thanksgiving, the full two weeks for Christmas, as well as New Year's Day. Both of these options, of course, have Martin Luther King Junior Observance Day, week for Mardi Gras. The difference here, option two has the full week before Easter as holiday. So you notice option two had one-day fall break, and option three has a two-day fall break. So that's why it would, one-day difference in the Easter holiday. So option three is how we had it this year, two days before Easter and the two days following Easter. And then all the calendars end with students' last day, May third, May twenty-third, and records day, May twenty-fourth. So option two did receive the most votes, which is, I'll go back over that one with you. Students start the August seventh, Labor Day holiday, a one-day fall break, same report card conference we did this year. Teacher PD day, and students stay home November first, day after Halloween. One week for Thanksgiving, two weeks for Christmas, plus New Year's Day. Mardi Gras holiday for a week, but Easter, a full week before Easter, and then school ending on the twenty-third of May with records day, May twenty-fourth. So again, the third page of your stapled handout explains each site and the number of votes each option earned by site.
Ms. White?
You were finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. He has a question. Sean has a question.
Okay.
So really, the main difference was, was one day between two and three?
Yes, sir. The main difference in between two and three is option three had two-day fall break and essentially four days off for Easter, which is the two days before Easter and the two days after. Whereas option two had a one-day fall break, and instead of that two-day fall break, that one day was put on the end for Easter to give a full week before Easter holiday. The Good Friday and the week before.
The six hundred and seventy voters, who makes that? Is that just teachers or is that?
All employees. Transportation, maintenance, all employees.
So that's just the ones that voted?
Yes, sir. We do send the ballots to every school principal or supervisor. They're giving out to employees, and anyone who chooses to vote, submits a vote.
So it's not representative of all of our employees? Some of them didn't vote?
Correct. It's anyone who chose to vote, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and just, you know, I did put on the third sheet for you that employee voting was from November second through November tenth.
Do we have any more, Ms. Dars?
Yes, it was interesting that two and three were so close, but it looks like option two did win out. So I'll make a motion to recommend to the full board the adoption of option two for the school calendar.
All right. But before we do that, I think Dars had.
Just to put a little bit in context, so state law requires that we have a certain number of instructional minutes per school year. And we know that is sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty minutes. You know, it's based on a certain number, one hundred and seventy-seven days at three hundred and sixty average minutes. And then we have some, you know, ways, as long as those minutes are actually logged as the sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Now, we further have some constraints in our own local calendars because of, our high school is on a four-by-four block. And what we try to do is to complete that first semester before Christmas and then go into the second semester. So it's sort of, it's a college schedule. So when they take their four courses in the fall, we have to have half of those instructional minutes completed prior to Christmas in order to award the credit, without us going over into January, which we have found is, you know, better for the, for the students and the teachers to complete exams and such before the Christmas holidays. So with all of that, the ending date as well, we also wish to get as much instructional time in prior to the end, of course, leave testing. And we look at Memorial Day really as sort of a hard and fast stopping point. Then we begin our summer programs after that. So looking at that, that's why we're starting, we always start early in August and try to complete that entire semester prior to Christmas. And that's been our practice for quite a long period of time, and that's what we worked through with the employees and the students and the parents when we did all of those initial inquiries many, you know, many years ago. So that's the reason these are so close. You know, you can sort of adjust some holidays in this mix, but there's not too much adjustment when you're looking at, we're going to be starting August first, we want to end prior to Memorial Day, and we've got to get in the requisite number of instructional minutes. And then especially with our high schools to make sure that we can complete an entire semester prior to the Christmas holidays.
I have a question.
John?
Ms. Fochey, oh, do we have emergency days built into the calendar?
Yes, we do. We've got.
How many do we have?
Oh, it runs anywhere from two and a half to four and a half, depending on the schools. So then beyond that point, then we would have to do the makeup time. So we bill those in initially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else has a question? Diana?
Yes, I know Maggie Rousseau was the chairman of the committee. Who else served on this committee?
For high school, Ms. Sophia Crook was on the committee. Ms. Brooke Royce was on for middle school. Ms. Maggie Rousseau was elementary. Ms. Kara Colburn, administrator for middle school. Ms. Katie McNabb for elementary, and Ms. Emily Boackel for high school.
Thank you.
Quizzing me there, testing my memory.
Thank you. That was good, without having it written down. Well, I want to thank the committee on behalf of the full board. We want to thank the committee for their hard work of putting this together. And, you know, I know Mr. Long asked a question, but every teacher did get, and support personnel did get to vote, correct?
The opportunity, yes.
If they had the, if they wanted to vote.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
And I know we usually go with, you know, the wishes of the, the majority, so it looks like option two did win. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Joe Long and seconded by Sean Warner. Everyone can cast their vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. White. This is personnel item, personnel changes for November of 2022. Ms. Pritchard's here?
Ms. Pritchard, her husband is doing fine, but she had to take him in for medical attention. He had somewhat of an emergency, but everything is great. They're doing fine, and they're on the way back right now. So before you, we have just the personnel changes since our last, you know, our last meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
How are we staffed?
We are, we still have some vacancies for a couple of teaching spots. And what we have done to cover those, many of the teachers are especially, we've got a couple at the high school where they are taking an additional class during their planning period and doing their planning after school, and we're compensating them for doing that. So it's, it's primarily two or three open positions at the high school level. And those would be in more difficult-to-staff areas, such as math or special education.
Special education.
Yeah. And at that point, we do have, though, the teachers who are, several teachers who are taking an extra class during their planning periods, so that they have certified teachers in there.
Any other questions for Ms. Fochey? Okay, Finance Committee, Mr. Lee Bowman.
So item number four point one revised, two thousand twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, general fund and special revenue fund budget projections. Mr. David Fernandez?
Okay, in the packets is the first revised budget revision for this fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. As you recall, the original budget was passed back in May of this year, before the end of the year. And we usually come back in the fall and do a revision to add in encumbrances and fund balances at the end of the year and refine some of our numbers. So that's basically what this is. It's technically, it's basically a technical revision. We went in and we added all the year-end encumbrances into the budget figures to reappropriate them for the new year. And we also added in any reservations in the fund balance at year-end and appropriate doses of amounts as well. There are four exhibits. The first one is a summary for the general fund of revenues and expenditures and ending fund balance. The second exhibit is a detail of the revenues. The third is a detail of expenditures, and the fourth is the special revenue funds budget. So in exhibit one, again, it shows basically a summary of total revenue, projected revenues, total projected expenditures, and other financing sources and uses. And we showing total revenues of eighty-five million, total expenditures of eighty-nine million, other financing sources and uses, net positive one point one million, and projecting an ending fund balance at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, of a little more than twenty mil, twenty-one million dollars. The change, the main changes in the revenues were we increased sales tax collections a little bit. We're maintaining some of the increased tax, sales taxes that we experienced last year. We looked at the trends since we adopted our last budget, when we adopted the budget in May. We really only had sales tax collections through March at that time. So we got the collection through the rest of the year. We looked at the trends for the first couple of months of this year, and they seem to be maintaining. So we increased those sales tax collections a bit. We also increased interest earnings on our accounts, because as, I'm sure you'll weigh, interest rates have gone up the last few months. So we are earning more interest on our checking and investment accounts. And we made a couple of other adjustments as well for different contributions, a grant. You've heard about the grant we received from the state board to install special education cameras in our self-contained classrooms. We received that money as well, and that has been budgeted. On the expenditure side, as we already stated, we went back and we added in all the year-end encumbrances. So those are many of the increases you see. We also increased a few of the areas that we noticed had increased by year-end, a little bit in utilities. We added the monies for the special aid cameras into the expenditure side and made a couple of other adjustments to salaries and benefits of the like for additional staff employed after year-end and the like. And exhibit four, again, is special revenue funds. And basically, it represents our current balances in our special revenue accounts, which would be our two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three allocations, as well as any monies carried forward from the previous year. So we rebudgeted those, and we're just re-presenting those to the board as the current budget's photos. And the lunch fund as well, which is on the last page. We went in there and re-added in the encumbrance of the year-end and the lunch fund as well to those expenditures. But basically, that's what we're recommending to the board. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions or comments? Sean?
Mr. Fernandez, I see sales tax were up about a million and a half, and they were projected. Do you anticipate avalour being up as well?
Well, as you recall, that we were going to take, get that decrease in avalour taxes because of the coal and the pipeline that closed down. We haven't received the numbers from the SSS yet, the final numbers for the year. There may be a slight increase in avalour taxes based on those figures, and if there are, we will come back in April and make an adjustment to those amounts. But I didn't at this time, because we're unsure of what the increase would be at the end.
Okay. And I see interest revenue is up?
Yes.
You got to add a little jingle to your pocket, you know.
Hopefully, it stays. We may even increase a little more in the spring, but at the rates.
One last question. How much was the grant to install the cameras? How much?
It was eighty, let's see. I'll give you an exact amount. Eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Isar?
Thank you. How much was the estimate on the cameras to install? Does that amount cover?
We're getting a quote right now. That was the amount that was determined by the state. What they did was they got an estimate of the classrooms and they determined, and it wasn't an actual reimbursement amount. It was an amount they calculated themselves, based on the number of classes we have.
So we had to report that number to the state, and then they calculated what they were going to give us?
What happened is the legislature appropriated an amount of money, which they sent to the Department of Education. Then the Department of Education surveyed all the districts. Then the Department of Education surveyed all the districts and schools in the state to see how many special education classrooms there were, where kids were in there more than, you know, fifty percent of the time. It had to be kids with significant disabilities, those types of rooms. So they took the total number of rooms in the state, the allocation, which was appropriated by the legislature, divided it one into the other, and got a per classroom allocation. And that was on the assumption that, you know, there would be a camera in each one if it was requested by parents. And that amount, I forgot if it was thirty-three or thirty-eight hundred per classroom. And then they multiplied by the number of classrooms they had, and they sent us that allocation. And that is the amount of money that we have to, we have to draw from as we install these cameras. It can only be for the purchase and the installation. You cannot spend it on any software upgrades, any replacement, any maintenance on it, nothing. It's just to buy and install. Those are the only uses for those particular funds.
So the bottom line, my question, I was trying to get to, I guess, is did they, did we get enough money in the grant to purchase cameras for all of our schools, or will we have to go into the general budget based on the quote that we received?
We're still in the process, again, to quote on installation. Hopefully it'll cover everything, but it depends on how many people request it.
Depends on the number of requests you get to.
Number of requests in the classrooms, so to determine how many we're going to need to have to install.
Can we get an update on that after you get those quotes, please?
Certainly.
Okay. And then the, the grant is a one-time thing, just to install, so in future years to?
In future years, unless there is an additional appropriation in the next legislative session or additional funds are found anywhere that flow through to us, it'll be our local responsibility to maintain it and replace. Once that money is expended.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any more questions from the board? Mr. Long?
Fernandez, I noticed you made an adjustment in the group insurance for retirees.
Yes, sir. We made adjustments through group shares throughout the budget because we're expecting a mid-year increase in group insurance of four and a half percent. So we went through and we increased group insurance in all areas.
Is that premium increases?
Yes, sir. It's premium increases funded by the district.
The employer portion.
The employer portion.
We've been notified by the Office of Group Benefits to expect a four and a half percent increase come January. So it'll be on both sides, the employer, employee, but we don't know exactly what those will be. So we anticipated that increase in the projections.
They have, is there any talk of making changes to the MFP?
Oh, there's always talk of making changes to the MFP. The big issues on the MFP and, and you know how long we've been involved in that, and I've been involved in that. But the, hopefully that for the first, we've only had one, I think, per pupil, increase in the per pupil amount in the MFP in over a decade. There are pockets of money for specified areas that there's talk of increasing. For example, money for dual enrollment, career and technical areas. You know, people are looking for pay raises dedicated through the MFP, which would be at a different level. We would also like to see a per pupil increase because if that per pupil increases, that's what helps cover these additional, these additional costs. But that won't be decided. Bessie will have to put together a proposed MFP and get it over to the legislature by March fifteenth. And then legislative session in the spring will then consider the MFP Bessie sends over. They can either accept it or reject it. They cannot modify it or amend it in any way. So we still have quite a process. Now, prior to that, though, what happens, the governor has to give his executive budget prior to that. So there are always discussions because there has to be an estimate from the Department of Education to the Division of Administration with what they think it will be, what that projection will be. The governor has to incorporate it into his executive budget. That must go over usually around early February. And the Bessie Board will not adopt a proposed MFP until March. So all of those little pressures and, you know, going back and forth, and that'll happen all spring until the legislative session ends. So we won't really know for sure till June what is going to happen with this.
So our MFP funding won't change, at least for the rest of this school year?
That's correct. This year it's set.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Anglin?
Yes, thank you. The internet income, you know, because that was a big issue throughout the state, you know, over a year ago or so, whatever. So what impact is that having that one with us right now? Because I know the money, the funds come to the sheriff's department and the sheriff divides it up throughout the, the internet.
Online sales tax.
Online.
Oh, the, oh, the sales tax, yes. That was part of the increase to the tax. There were two, as we understand it, there were a couple of things that affected the increase. One was the online sales tax collections.
And how much are we talking about right now?
They haven't given us a breakdown of what was specifically to that. But there was also an increase of sales taxes related to the refineries, which may or may not, they don't have an indication yet on how much of that is going to continue and how much is going to go away. So the internet increase of the couple of million dollars that are sales taxes went up. A part of it is due specifically to internet sales tax collection. A part of it is to the refineries. But the internet sales tax collection should continue to refineries, may or may not. We will, we will see on that.
When they do their turnarounds, the sales and use taxes that come through when they're doing those major events, then you get a temporary increase and you don't know what the sustainability of that is. But the internet, the sales taxes, and I think a lot of people realize when you, when you're ordering online, in a lot of times, none of those online purchases a few years ago, did you have to pay sales tax on.
Right.
And then, as you pointed out, the state cracked down on that and passed some legislation, and now people are bigger companies now, as you pay the sales taxes on purchases through the large companies, they've got to charge you individual sales taxes that then are remitted back to us. So that's a big bump because that was, you know, recently implemented in the last year or so. And now more and more online companies that do business and sell products to a Louisiana resident must then tack on that sales tax.
That's correct.
And keep their records and remit it back to the state and local government and counties.
Because with the, with the holiday season coming up, a lot of people do online buying. You know, I know my wife does.
I do.
And that's why we monitor the monthly sales tax collections. And so far this year, we've received the first three months of sales taxes, and they seem to have maintained that level. So that's why we're confident that we are going to maintain some, most of this, or the good part of this increase throughout this year. That's why we increased estimates for sales taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lee Beaumont. I would like to make a motion that we send the revised 2022, 2023 general fund and special revenue fund budget to the board with, to our regular meeting with the recommendation.
Second motion by Mr. Long. All in favor? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have another question on the LA four. Where's the LA four?
LA four?
Yeah, with the revised budget. Why is there such a difference there? What?
LA four has been funded from a couple of sources in the past. Sometimes it's funded with federal monies, sometimes it's funded with state monies, and it'll go back and forth. This year, it, you know, last year, it shifted from state to federal, and we're expecting that shift to stay the same. That's why we just, it doesn't mean we lost money. It just means we shifted the source of the money from either state to federal or federal to state, when you see those changes in LA four figures. Now, also, LA four is not funded in the allocation anymore. It is now funded on actual student contact hours. We have to report every month to the state how many student contact hours we had. So we really aren't really sure how much we're going to get every year. We don't get a flat allocation every year and just draw down on it. We get reimbursed based on the number of students that show up to class every day and every month. So that's our current estimates. And we just shifting it from between those sources of funds based on where we expect those monies to come from.
Yeah, and it's quite extensive now in the record keeping because for that four-year-old program, it's the number of contact hours. So if the child is there one day, but not there the next day, you don't get funded for the day they're not there. So it's never going to be, it used to be just a direct allocation of so much per child. Now it's so much for each child who is attending.
And is that the federal funding that's changing or the state funding that's changing based on the per hour?
It's the grant itself, and the state shifts how they fund the grant between federal and state. So it's just the grant terms itself, whether it's state or federal, they fund it the same way.
Because it seems like quite a difference from what was estimated to the prize.
Right, but remember, we just shifted it to the other side, to the federal.
It shifted over to special revenue fund.
So overall, we have the same amount. It's just shifting where we are expecting the monies to come from.
All right, thank you for that explanation.
Any more questions from the board? To all the motion, Ms. Warner and Mr. Long, you have a second? Go ahead and cast your votes, can you please?
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Next item, superintendent's notes.
Oops. Okay, oh, yeah. We just, we had a wonderful, I think, breakfast on Monday, our day of reflection breakfast. And I just want to thank everybody who was involved in making it such a big success. I think our community members were very appreciative, and it went off well. The performances were great, you know, the ambiance, the food. It takes so many people to make something like that happen. And it ran like clockwork, and we got a great, you know, great response from our community members and community leaders. So I just want to publicly thank everyone who was involved in it. Many of our schools, in fact, all of our schools will be having their, coming up soon their Christmas or their holiday productions. I know the date for the Shumet High Christmas show is December first and second, if you don't want to mark that in your calendars. And many of our elementary and middle schools will be doing their productions as well. You can check it on their websites. They send the newsletters home. And I'm sure Mr. Kassar, when he's able to, will be here to give those specific dates to the board, but they are given to the parents, and they're on the websites and the newsletters and such. I want to remind everybody that Friday will be the last day of school before the Thanksgiving holidays. The students will be off next week, but of course, our office will be open Monday and Tuesday for everyone who has business here to attend to. And the kids will resume then on Monday, November twenty-eighth. And just one last thing, you know, we talked about the, trying to get teachers and our grow your own programs and all those types of things. So on December eighth, we're having school visits for prospective teachers. You know, teachers who are finishing up at the colleges and universities, or teachers who are working elsewhere and want to come take a look at our schools. We're going to have a little function for them, and they'll be able to walk through and tour some of our schools, and we hope to, and we've done this pretty much every year, and we've gotten several candidates out, you know, from those meetings. So that's going to be on December eighth as well. So it'll be pretty busy, you know, between now and Christmas with those productions and meetings and such. And tonight, just like when I mentioned with Ms. Jackson, because both of her kids are involved, you know, we've got that induction ceremony over at La Casa, and we have many other activities. At the high school is that, you know, for the eighth graders and such, a scheduling expo for they and their parents who can come in and take a look at all of the offerings to the children. The eighth graders normally do that, and when they take a tour of the school and such, but this is also for the parents to come in and see everything and look at the different opportunities that are there at the high school for the student, for their students, and to make the decisions as they begin to schedule. They can actually see it in action, even though they're counseled with it at the eighth grade level. But this gives the parents a chance to actually see where it's going to be, what's going to be involved in it. So they're having it as we speak over at the high school right now. So it's always a really nice scene.
I just want to let the board know that it's a superintendent evaluation that's coming due. So in your packet, you have the evaluation, and we need to get that back to Angie by the twenty-ninth, so we can have the evaluation meeting the first week of December?
December sixth.
Okay, mom. Okay, mom. And yes, no, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, that's all.
I just wanted to also thank Ms. White for her acts of kindness tonight to board members. That was very sweet. And also, Ms. Vochet, you mentioned the breakfast. It was, it was spectacular as always, but it just, every year, it sees the last year. So thanks to the administration, all the teachers who were involved, and all the students who performed at the breakfast and served the food, and the cafeteria ladies, ladies who cooked the food, and, you know, it was just a very wonderful presentation by, by all. And as you said, I've got so many compliments of, of our school system, of the people who were able to attend, and see all the great things that are actually happening in our schools. And, you know, to see the performances of the, of the students and see, just see how well-rounded of a program we have. So thank you very much. It takes a lot, Ms. Vochet, Ms. Lametta, Penn TV, y'all were great in, you know, getting everything together. And, you know, Ms. Pritchard, you know, it's just so many people to thank.
Oh, there's so many people to thank. And I just want to say.
Well-coordinated.
And I say this every year, I didn't say to the people at the, at the event, but, you know, Phyllis Dyson who gets all those kids who are the servers, you know, and they walk in so nice, and we, and I make a real point on how fast we can get the food out because the program is long. We want to get everybody their food out and eat. We did it in four minutes. So we served four hundred fifty people in four minutes, which I think is extensive. And we had so many of our kids out there, and it just runs like clockwork. And, you know, and at the risk of leaving people out, the Annalise and Ariana Kassar with the chorus of CHS Live, and you had Jason Rossk and Caleb Lambert with our band members and performances. And of course, you mentioned the men of Penn, you know, doing a lot of videos, Lexi Pritchard, who went ahead and was coordinating a lot of that. You have Cindy England, who is just the master of making everything just look incredible. Such a creative genius we have with her. So she had her little crew with the setting up of the tables and getting everything to look just exactly wonderful, you know, for the event. And I know I'm going to kick myself because I'm going to leave some people out, and at this point, I'm just trying to think, but I just want to sincerely thank everyone who had anything at all to do with this. And, and our two hosts for the evening, or for the morning, Abigail Coker, who is a wonderful young performer, excellent student, she did an incredible job, and Colby Parrow, who, he, you know, held his own. He is not as much of a performer. He did an incredible job. And that young man is our national, is a National Merit semifinalist. He's the one who has done. So he had just come when we practiced on that Friday afternoon from the academic games tournament, where he had a perfect score. tournament, where he had a perfect score in the math game and so, math games and such. So he's an incredible academic talent. And those two young people represented our school system extremely well and are the face of our students within the community, so. And then, of course, Angie, who is there making all of this happen with the seating and the tickets and all those types of things where she runs it all. So it's just an incredible job of everybody working together. And not to even mention the staff at Chalmers High School, who just is so accommodating. And, you know, they are rerouting classes and kids, and everybody there is running around making sure that we're having school at the same time as we're having these big events. And that is the most, I think, difficult part of the whole production as well. So a shout out to all the teachers and staff and administrators at Chalmers High School who helped make that possible.
Mr. Kassar?
Yes, and Mr. Kassar.
Okay, anyone else from Ms. Voeche? Ain't none?
And Mr. Morrell, who did the food. So you see, I know I keep leaving people out.
Mr. Campbell?
I second the motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? This means the term is adjourned. Thank you and good night.